Wasn't necessarily lifted because we were redoing.
No, not that I know of, but I thought it was more. Oh, that, no, this is.
Put in the roll one.
I am, yeah, that one.
Yeah, with the more engineering. I just thought they only had requested rolls.
I would do, we have long conversation.
See what's up to me. Everyone who wants to read.
Anyway, I didn't see anything else.
Yeah. We said on Monday, Monday and Monday. They had to deal with.
I'm gonna bring this up for discussion. He had talked about, I don't know what to call it, I just called it. You know. What would you call that?
Six thirty.
Shit, see, you plug in.
Oh, yep. Um, no, it's a diagnostic reader.
I just want a conversation. So, get back to Monday, but I was traveling and didn't be able to.
Oh, yeah, I'll call, uh, Mercer County Commission meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda, any additions to the, any additions to the agenda?
I wanna put one. Go ahead. I'd just like to add the Ida Bailey, um.
Under other?
Under other. I didn't submit it earlier because I, as you, I got it at nine o'clock last night, so I wasn't sure if it was gonna be here, here in time.
Okay, got anything else, Mark?
No, that's it.
Rick?
Uh, I wanna have discussion on diagnostic reader for highway department. I can be on other business also.
Okay, that's where I was putting. Anybody else have anything they wanna add to the agenda?
I think I can cover most of my stuff under. I think I can cover most of my stuff under portfolio.
Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Well, I guess, oh, would this be the spot to talk about the next commission meeting? I won't be here the nineteenth, and I was gonna see if anybody would be able to.
Sure, we can put that under other, uh, next commission meeting. Next meeting date.
That's it.
Okay, anything else?
You know, maybe we should add this, um, I guess this is a legislative proposal for a study.
Should we just put the Lloyd Knight console on there? Is that what you're saying, Casey?
Sure, Mark just gave us this packet, so, yeah.
I know, I, Jonathan dropped it off, I didn't give it.
Oh, okay.
So, I'd, I'd like to wait until the next meeting, so we all had a chance to digest it and have.
Okay.
Do you want me to put it on the next agenda?
Okay, cross it back off already.
So, when, when is the next CCC meeting then?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Should we put it on both?
You mean?
Whole conversion counties. Well, I forgot, I forgot there's farmers and all.
No, I'm just, I, I have not even seen this, I just know that.
If I'm reading this pamphlet correctly, they're proposing a study.
Why don't we just put it on for today and put it on for next meeting, and then we can at least openly talk about it today and. Can you both?
Okay, we're gonna put that on next meeting?
I think, I think today and next.
Okay, so, I cross it off, put it back on.
Yeah, put it back on.
Anything else? Hearing none, uh, do I have a motion?
The amended agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Rick? Casey?
Aye.
G and I, motion passed. Uh, minutes of the last meeting.
The only thing, Carmen, that I'd like to change, um, where we talk about the interstate engineering bill, part of the reason we corrected it is because in the initial minutes, you had thirteen thousand instead of thirty-one thousand. So, I'd like you to go back to say thirteen thousand.
When, the initial minutes. Said thirty-one. It was the five eight, two point ten.
It said thirteen initially, thirteen five eighty-two, and that's why we changed it to thirty-one five eighty-three.
Oh, yeah, it was thirteen.
It was thirteen thousand, yeah, I, I think, I think it was just numbers backwards, but.
We had to change it to the, originally, I believe it was.
Yeah, the first two numbers.
Cause it was a tighter or whatever.
Yeah, I was just, uh, you transpose the.
Yeah. So, I'd like to just, that first, go back to thirteen thousand five eighty-two.
So, you wanna say correct interstate bill of thirty-one five eighty-two?
To say thirteen thousand five eighty-two.
From thirteen five eighty-two to the correct of thirty-one five eighty-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll move to approve this agenda or as amended.
You have a second?
Second.
Casey?
Aye.
No, no, you.
I think Mark seconded.
Oh, I was.
It was both of them at the same time.
No, I didn't. I did, but that's all right, it don't matter.
All right, it's Mark now. Okay, Mark seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Casey? G and I, motion passed. Okay, moving right down to other business, twenty twenty-five budget discussion.
My first question on that would be, what did we do with that landfill thing? We were going to move money over for the landfill for, um.
Move it back, but that hasn't been done yet.
We, we saved that one thirty, there was like ninety, I don't remember.
Ninety-five thousand.
Well, we were gonna move, but there.
And it should be on the transfer sheet.
Yeah, we had like a hundred, we had, we budgeted one thirty or thirty-five in twenty-four, and we had that left over, we were gonna use. We had used that for wages and stuff, and we didn't ever use that. We took everything out of the, the increases, we took out, we took them out of.
A different.
Their line item.
Okay, that, yeah, I.
That money all went.
That is, that was general fund.
Right, no.
That is not there. I mean, you know what I mean, unless we budget for it.
I understand that, that, but it carried over into twenty-five.
I don't know how, unless we budgeted for.
In twenty-five, we were, we had that money, or twenty-four, we had the money left over, and we were gonna use it for the ninety-five, for the road, or the landfill, yeah.
Okay, on the transfer sheet, general to landfill is ninety-five thousand, and that, that, you guys all got a copy of that, I gave you a copy of all the budget stuff. Not this time, I gave it to you two weeks ago, and every meeting, pushing it forward, so, yeah, if you look on the transfer sheet, that's where that's at. I think, um, back of curianta. Next meeting.
Uh, yeah, we can have budget discussion every meeting if you want, and which is okay and probably good. If someone has questions, they wanna bring up about the budget or.
Probably better, this meeting, we got less on the agenda. Didn't wanna get done early.
There you get your.
I want to go.
Did we got budget?
I have, mine's out with my other paperwork, so I don't have it in here, so.
Do you have anything?
Well, my question was, when do we put that? That was for their.
Right.
Health benefit.
Yes, right, we can do it.
You guys want, I mean, normally in the past, they've always done it.
You can take it out of the, that money, what, if I understand it correctly, the money that we carried over went into the general fund, we know that.
Yes.
And that, that's where we fund this from, is out of that, out of that, out of the period.
Right, but, but it's in the budget, we put it in the budget, so if you guys want me to move it now, we can move it now. Normally, they've always waited till the end of the year, but that was, I don't even know, when we are needed, that's when we need it.
I don't know, I'm just, that was something we had talked about doing, yeah, beginning of the year, and we never have done it yet, so.
Oh, I didn't.
I don't know if we need to do it now or not, that which is.
I'll talk to Candy and see.
See where we're at with it.
Okay.
And let me know when you want it.
Yeah, it's just.
Just put it, uh, put it on next agenda also, just so we can continue to discuss, I guess.
Okay, so what do you want on agenda?
Just twenty twenty-five budget discussion.
Okay.
That was one of them, and then I think there was, there was one other one, I'll have to go back and look.
I know I had another one listed, but it's sitting on the other paper.
Trying to remember that one, I'm having trouble, I'll have to have you.
I remember, there was two, two of them that we were brought forward, and I, I'd have to go back and look at my papers, but, yeah. The one I do remember distinctly was the ninety-five thousand that we had, we're gonna move forward for the healthcare, for the landfill.
Yeah.
But we don't, if we don't have to do that today, that's fine.
It doesn't have to be done today, no, just, we, just by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Just let me know?
Yep.
We're going.
Casey? Nothing? You didn't have a budget question, did you?
Nope.
Okay. Bar, uh, barroom quote and shop garage doors, Mr. Albers. Barroom quote, what are we doing?
No, that quote is, everybody's got a copy of that, it's a one page.
Okay, there is, I, you should have sent that with, that's a Dakota, Dakota Sound proposal.
I think James would keep passing those to me.
Did you?
Oh, the door quote is one thing, but I gave you.
There should be a Dakota Sound proposal and then an email.
Did you get one, James?
I do now.
Okay, the barroom quote is a Dakota proposal from Dakota Sound? You guys all have that?
I had that in the email Monday, I believe.
We can start with that, um, that is, I know it was, got brought up with Chris from Core Facilities, that, uh, you guys are possibly interested in upgrading like our microphone system, our recording system, camera system, the, the monitors, et cetera. Um, Chris, he got us in touch with Dakota Sound Incorporated out of Bismarck. Um, he indicated via email, he, he's not gonna get involved in this, so he's just letting us do this on our own, so. They did come out, I met with Carmen and myself, and they gave pretty much the scope of work is what it says, I know it's, some of it's a little over my head and all that, but what they had proposed basically was to put a new screen on that wall, an eighty-inch screen, and to put another one on this other wall, so, you know, you, you could see it no matter where you're sitting. And they proposed putting a new camera in, and they proposed the new microphones, which will be wireless, the pickup sound better, and, uh, what else was there? A program to run that, which we'd need our own laptop to run the system, right, which you indicated you had one.
Right, that we could use, and then, um, it would also be able to be live.
Okay.
Because of that.
And then, yeah, like she said, we will be capable of live streaming, if you would be interested in doing that in the future for meetings. Um, we just would have to somehow set it up with our, um, whoever does like our Facebook or whatever, YouTube or.
Yeah, YouTube.
Okay, one, I picked up on one thing you mentioned, laptop. Um, what was the discussion on laptop or the idea?
We need, we need a computer to operate the system with, and that's not provided in this quote. They said if we have our own, we could use that, you know, versus buying one from them, so. It's like a computer program.
My thought on that is, if we have a laptop, that'll work, but I don't want it to be Mark's laptop that he uses every day.
Right.
Oh.
I want it to be a laptop that will be available here all the time.
Then we don't have to purchase them.
Yep, I don't want that to be where, well, Mark called in sick this morning, now we gotta run around and try and find the damn laptop or where it's at. I, I don't want that to happen. Picking, I'm, don't mean to pick on you, but you're in here. I could pick on the young lady behind you, but you're further sitting up front.
It's the only thing I carry around everywhere.
Yeah, I would like it basically dedicated to.
Okay, I don't, it would probably save money if we.
Armor can do that.
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna say, it'd probably save us some money if we could get our own then.
My question is, we're gonna spend roughly seventy-five thousand dollars. Do we not want to put this in twenty-six budget? We don't have it in the twenty-five budget.
We could certainly consider that, yes.
I, I know personally, it's higher than what I had considered, to where I think maybe it would be good to get some input from the public on that.
Uh, I think at a minimum, we should at least get a competitive bid also.
Do you have any suggestions on who else might do this type of work?
Oh, there's a one.
Locally?
Uh, as far as like in Bismarck Mandan and.
Yeah.
Western North Dakota.
Do you have any preference, or do you know any?
I don't have any preference, but I do know of other companies that do this.
Okay.
Uh, Dickinson has one, uh.
Blue Hawk?
Blue Hawk Audio Video.
Can you get me those?
Yeah, Tricor Audio is another one, I mean, there's quite a few.
Okay.
Mark can get you that information.
Okay.
Get, get a hold of Mark, and he'll, he'll get you that.
Okay.
I guess one thing I would mention is if it is gonna be August or something, or maybe July when we're doing budgeting, then this proposal's only good for thirty days.
Right.
Maybe we should get the proposals closer to.
Well, maybe we can get them and they'll just pump them closer to.
Yeah, I, I would say, even if they say it's only good for thirty days, this gives us an idea, and we can have rebid it.
It's a good budgetary amber.
Right. This, this gives us, we got an idea.
Something to put in a budget for it.
Right.
I, I just think on seventy-four, three thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, it's our, to do our due diligence, we need to have more than one bid, in my opinion.
Yeah, okay. Sure, can do that, that's why I just wanted to bring this to your attention, and it's a high dollar amount, so, didn't know what direction you wanted to go with this.
Well, it's, yeah, I know it's a high dollar amount, but I think it's something we need to do, I mean, our system is like, oof, so.
We're both gonna check, I didn't know if West River could do anything like this for us either.
Oh, I don't know.
Cause I, so I, we'll check on that, Jim, you and I.
Okay.
Okay, so, the consensus here is, we're gonna get more bids and probably work it in next year's budget.
Okay.
Correct? That's pretty much the feeling.
I think for that kind of price tag, and then this would also give us the opportunity for people to zoom in.
Yeah.
And attend the meetings. It's like we had a commissioner that was out of the country, maybe somewhere.
Yeah, I did ask, I, I did ask that, and they said it is possible that someone could jump in, live stream on this, kinda like Zoom.
Tellin' or something like that, we had, you know.
Lot of technical difficulties.
Yeah.
And I, well, I, I, I'm on another board, and with that board, I was in South Africa, and so I, I had to try it, and I did. I attended the meeting, I was sitting in, down by Johannesburg, and I was at the, attended the meeting.
Yeah.
That was, that was quite something.
Okay, so you want some kind of idea around?
I got a list here, we'll.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we should get it now, and then we can always re-see if they'll update it closer to time.
We should have some basic numbers, and when you start throwing stuff out for budgeting, you know, if you're looking at seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand, or fifty thousand, or where, you know.
Correct, that's what I look at here, even if they say it's only good for thirty days, we can tell them, well, you can give us a bid, but we might want you to rebid it in.
Okay.
August.
Okay.
Because we need an idea, like we just said, five thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, we, we need an idea, and then we can budget around that.
Is this proposal, I know it's got a lot of stuff in it, is this something we're looking at? Cause there is so many different variables with this that you can add, delete, or, you know, is there anything extra that we would want?
More. A little more serious on the product, we could probably ask some of these vendors to come here and.
Oh, yeah.
Answer some of our questions at that point.
I would definitely.
Cause, yeah, there's, there's stuff on here I go.
But I do, I do think you got a pretty good base here, Jim, that you got together, so.
Yes, okay.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
So, something similar from other companies, we'll see what we come up with, so, okay.
Thank you for that.
Yep. And then the next one is that, it's a email quote, um, Jamie was telling me about a product called, it's called Snirt Stopper, it's door seals for like shop garages, things like that, and she asked that I get a quote from that company. Um, I don't know if you wanna explain it, you've seen the product.
So, I saw the product at the Mine on H show, in fact, and actually, one of the other employees is who brought it to my attention. It would basically reseal all of our garage doors in the shop out here, and I actually thought of it for the county shop is where this started, cause I know they were having trouble with mice over there. And so that's where this started, it's a company out of Minnesota, um, excellent reviews, the product itself in person, I actually got it for our house, cause it's a good product, and it really, I think this quote alone, we will easily save that in heating and cooling to the shop, just in no time.
I was researching it, I think it said you can get forty percent savings, cost savings on your, your.
Heating.
Heating.
Yeah.
Throughout the year, and then I believe it's a twenty-five year warranty on this product also. Which is a pretty good warranty for something like that, so.
I've got a couple of questions, um, then sent between Jim and Jamie. Um, are you looking at wanting to do this pretty soon, and do we have room in the budget for this?
This I should have enough in my billing and maintenance budget, it's not that big of an expense, but I know they are getting a little torn here and there, a lot of those, cause that, those shop doors go up and down quite a bit.
Yeah, and if, I mean, if you're standing in the shop, you can.
And once again, as Mark mentioned on this one, and I, you did a lot of work already, but, uh, are there any other places that do similar work, where we could get bids?
Midwest stores could come out and like reseal, but it'd be the same crap stuff we have.
Okay.
Now, I know they've done it at least once that I recall, that they've.
Not gonna last twenty-five years like this product.
Pardon?
Not gonna last twenty-five years like this product's warranty.
No.
The stuff out here, and that wasn't that long ago, that Midwest stores was here, but it, it sure is not fitted up.
They give a twenty-five year warranty?
On this.
That's what it, when I researched it on, on the website, that's what it said.
Sorry, I missed that, I didn't hear you.
And the only thing I wish I'd have done, I didn't think about it, was we got the two Sallyport doors on the jail garage door, and I didn't think about it till yesterday.
Yeah, so maybe, and maybe that's something we can look at, cause those doors get opened as well, and that's extra heated in there.
Yeah.
This would be just for the, the main shop.
Yeah, just the shop.
Across the way.
So, do you wanna wait until like the next meeting with this and get, add those other two doors right away?
If you think you're interested.
They're gonna come up, I'm sure.
Cause there is mileage, yeah, why don't we, Carmen, can you add that on for next meeting, and we'll get those numbers and do it all for next meeting? Just shop garage doors, please. And I don't know if, Rick, if the county shop, if they, if Alroy wants to discuss it, maybe it's something that they want to.
Well, we got, yeah, we got, uh, Full Valley, the Aiden, I know they put, uh, different doors, they have heating issues there, so, I mean, it's something to look into.
The rodents issue alone, and you were shot.
I know we have mice issues over here all the way along too, so.
I don't know if anything will stop mice.
Yeah.
Slow them down.
I'd like to see a guarantee on that, that will stop mice.
They just can get it fly as a pancake, get it by anything.
Yeah, it's, and once you have a mouse, uh, yeah.
I, I was, I was really impressed by this product.
Okay, so let's, uh, put that on the next agenda again.
They would need, uh, shop sized doors?
Yeah.
I should have Alroy get over you, and then we can, you guys can work that out.
What I had to, what I had to do is, the guy wanted me to measure the doors, you know, sides, height, width. Got it to him, and then he gave us the quote that way, so.
I'll just get you to pick the guys.
And let's have that itemized, even if they do it on one, and get them know in case we don't want to, but let's, let's have it.
Separate.
Separate, so to speak.
Well, you're almost, for, for budgeting, you know.
Yeah, even like right here, you know, we know each door.
Under other business then? Yeah.
Yeah, that works.
Cause you'll take it out of different line items when you, if you do it over here and over there.
Right, right.
Come from different places.
Okay, okay, anything else? Thank you, Jim.
All right.
Bee's paid liquor license renewal. Do I have a motion to approve the? Pardon? Okay, if we're gonna have the application, we can approve it. Recorder, January revenues, three.
I'm going to approve the January recorder piece.
I'll second.
That was Casey.
Okay, Casey will second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
G and I, motion passed. Uh, let's go right down, uh, let's do the Ida Bailey under other.
Okay, so, got, uh, the proposal from Ida Bailey about nine o'clock last night. And so what they're looking to do, if you look underneath, uh, scope of services, which would be on page four. So, I had talked to him, uh, just kind of the issue, they're gonna review the January payroll prepared by the county auditor's office to verify proper earnings, deductions, taxes were applied, and identify issues to be resolved with assistance from Tyler Support. And then to review payroll preparation, review processes to identify whether adequate internal controls are in place, and to make recommendations for improvements. Also, there is an additional scope of services that they're willing to offer, we don't need to do it if we choose not to, but, uh, perform additional review of the setup and functionality of the ERP system to identify gaps and our weaknesses, research issues with staff, and as necessary, work with Tyler Support to resolve any issues. Um, I've got, gotten, uh, had explained to them the challenges that we've had with this Tyler, uh, implementation, um, and which is why I ended up, this gal, I think she's out of Rancho Cucamonga, California, she's our expert, but, uh, and then asked questions, was it the Muni ERP or ERP Pro and all that, but, uh, anyway, um, I know we already approved to do this, it's just basically getting the next step determined. I know we already approved to do this, it's just basically getting the next step determined and in place and, uh, I would think that, uh, Gene, my understanding of it is, there'll be, they would send over an engagement letter to you to have signed, and then from there they would be in contact with, with Carmen to get all the information rolling and get this done.
And this is another one of those where we don't have a, a total at the end until they're done.
Unfortunately, they, it's gonna be a time and material and, uh, and they don't know what they're, they don't know what they, they're looking at until they get into it, so.
Okay, I would say, uh, we do like, uh, the scope of service and see what what they, what their findings are there, and then based on that, we see if we wanna go further and dive deeper.
A hundred percent, one, one and two, the, on the scope of services, I told them that's what we, that's what we're requesting, that additional scope is what they're offering, um, I don't, I don't know if that, that's what we need to do, but.
I would say that'd be based on the, what, what they, their findings.
Correct.
So.
Well, Tyler should take care of some of that, shouldn't they?
A hundred percent, yeah, I agree to just, uh, um, like most any salespeople in the world, they, they hear, hear you out and your complaint and then they always add on an additional service they're looking to sell you, but then I told them, I said, I want it separate though, you can propose that, but I want it separate, cause what we're specifically doing is gonna audit the January payroll and, um, identify the issues, correct them, and then review of internal controls, that's the two things we need to do.
How soon are they able to move on this?
Uh, I told them time is of the essence, and so, uh, they would, this, uh, Kristy Even, she'd be expecting a call today, and I could probably make that call and give her a warm handoff to, to
Okay.
Probably Eugene and then, um, to.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this, uh, we have a, we, we need to get some, get our employees to feel good about their paychecks, so this'll hopefully resolve that. So I guess I would just need a motion to go ahead with this.
Do we need a motion though, cause we made the motion last time for Ida Bailey?
To look into it, I don't know if it was to move forward with it.
Open to hire Ida Bailey to
Okay.
Audit the January twenty twenty-five payroll.
Okay.
And, and Mark amended it to audit, to include a complete walkthrough of payable and payroll processing controls in place to write an assessment of control design and recommendation for control improvements.
All right, thank you.
I feel like that's.
That's been covered then, yes?
No, I, I think mostly getting this here is for informational purposes, just so we knew exactly what, uh,
Thank you.
There's any changes or anything to what, what they're.
Well, it won't be a surprise to the other, rest of the commissioners now, and we, 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 we know you're looking, moving forward, and just to let everybody know, I did email the rest of the commissioners, Mark, uh, took this by the handle, he had a mentioned some questions I should ask, and I said, well, do you wanna move forward with this? And I said, I'll gladly hand it off, and he, so he took it, that's why Mark's doing this, cause I know at the last meeting I mentioned that I'll be looking into it, Mark, but I did let my fellow commissioners know that, so. I guess I should say that so the general public knows too.
Well, we did say last meeting that Mark would take some of the lead on it, so I don't think it's a total surprise.
So, that, that's why he's presenting it, so, okay, thank you, Mark, uh, anybody got any questions?
Well, if you want a discussion on the motion, I was just gonna, I was just gonna bring it up, which you've brought up a couple of other times, it's like, is there anybody else in the, in North Dakota that does this versus going out of state, or do we need to get another bid or anything? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, this, this is, this is who they directed it to, from my call to the main line in their Bismarck office. And so technically we're still working with the Bismarck office, it's just that they're professionals or experts are out of Rancho Cucamonga, California.
So I mean, that's where we need to go, I'm just asking if we, I mean, we asked it three times here already.
I, I did, and I, I considered Brady Morris also, but the motion was specific to Ida Bailey, so I.
And I said Ida Bailey, cause that is who Nadafle recommended.
Okay, I'm just asking this.
Yeah.
You know, we've asked that, we're comparing.
No, I, I, I agree, I just.
No, I fully understand, uh, part of it is in, in, but this is just me, is we need to get moving on this, not wait until July and August, September.
I, I don't have a problem, I'm just saying if we're all comfortable, then let's go for it.
Well, with my conversation with Aaron Burst with NACCO, then he said that other counties are having the same issue. So, these people have already probably looked into other counties.
Well, and Ida Bailey has worked with Mercer County in the past also.
And I guess if people are out there listening to this, they'll understand why we went this way then.
Yeah, and, and this is, again, this is Ida Bailey's Tyler expert, so.
They'll, they'll understand why, why we chose and why we're going this way then.
Okay, anything else, um, that matter? Uh, diagnostic, I couldn't even spell that, I blew it up, but a diagnostic reader for the highway department.
Do we have to vote on that motion or what?
We may.
We don't, we've already done.
We've already done that at the last meeting.
At the last meeting, that's what Jamie was clarifying for me.
All right, I didn't, I thought you were making.
No, Jamie was clarifying that for me.
Excuse me, I was wrong.
I don't need to ask for a motion.
All right, discussion on the diagnostic reader, I, I talked briefly with Casey about it a couple of weeks ago, but the shop, uh, employees have talked about, they would be able to, if we had a diagnostic reader at the shop, we could do a lot more of our own work rather than taking it to Bismarck just to get the diagnostic done all the time. Every time we do it, it's roughly almost a thousand dollars, the time we take it down there, get it read, and then bring it back.
A diagnostic reader for what?
It's just, uh, the
For the cold, like if you're starting a cold.
It's a computer to plug into your clothes on your truck.
Okay, a regular, on your regular vehicle.
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
So they can see what the problem, might be an EGR valve.
I'm just asking because are we talking a diagnostic code reader for the cap?
No, it was for, it was for those trucks.
The pickups and cars and, okay.
Yeah, Snap-on.
Just to clear.
Snap-on makes them nap-on, nap, there's difference.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of them.
The only thing, reason why the discussion was, discussion was, is that, you know, if we wanna do this, I don't have any, they said roughly nine grand to do it, and I'm like, there's different ones out there, and I don't know what they are, and I thought my, if we wanted to do anything like this, they need to come with what we're getting and how much it's gonna cost.
Yes, they should bring us a, a price and I actually.
Significantly higher than what?
Pardon?
I think it's.
I feel like nine thousand is significantly higher than.
A code reader for nine grand?
That's what I mean.
I think they're a little, I don't know.
There's different kinds and different levels of what they do, and I would have them explain what they're doing, why they're doing it, and the reason for this discussion is. Pardon?
I'm surprised they didn't have one already.
Well, the thing is, if we wanna move forward with this, I wanna give them okay to get the things together, I didn't wanna waste their time if the commission wasn't interested in us.
Well, I, I'm just, I, I know the code readers I have and they, they tell you quite a bit, uh, the, you could basically scratch a couple of zeros off that nine thousand.
That's.
Is what I spent on mine, so.
Well, this is what, all I'm telling you, this is the numbers they gave me, why they gave me them, I don't know, I would like to know what we're gonna buy for that, what they're getting and why they needed, whatever.
Yep, go ahead and get that.
All I wanted to do is permission to pursue it rather than.
Go ahead.
I think they should get a couple of options, though, like if they're thinking that nine thousand dollar one, they should probably find a lesser amounted one as well, because.
Well, it might be a reason they needed that, other than, I don't know.
Exactly.
Go ahead and, maybe this one can do the trucks and the graders and stuff.
Maybe do all the things.
Go ahead and bring us the details.
I wanted all the, you know, they need to, we need to come with the, you know, the teeth.
No, I understand.
Eyes dotted, we know what we're doing, right now it's just discussions.
I know, because, yeah, you're gonna have a check engine light on your vehicle, you plug into the, I forget what it's called. Anyway, you, you plug your code reader in there and it tells you, oh, your air filter needs to be changed. Okay, well, you take it to the service, you know, have a service look at it, it's a seventy-five dollar charge just to tell you, change your air filter.
We just looked at a bill like, what was it, two weeks ago, whatever it was, cause there was one bill that we, we sent the truck to Bismarck, I mean, it took two employees to get it there, and.
Two employees to go get it back.
To go get it, plus we ended up, it was an EGR valve, we could've bought the valves out of their shop.
Well, that's just that maybe this higher opportunities for the semis and everything else.
The bill to read it was seven hundred and fifty bucks.
It sounds, no, it sounds very like we should go down that path, they get it, have them get you a couple of prices and then, not only the prices, but we'll need to know, if it's a nine thousand dollar reader, what, what we're reading.
Whether you, what do you need, why, and where, and all this stuff.
What equipment it covers.
Yeah, what equipment it's.
Well, and then the next side of that is, you know, not only the cost of reading, but if they're like me and the check engine light comes on and you still can use it, you probably keep using it, and if you had a code reader and you could read it and go, we should stop using this because this is serious.
Yes, yes.
We might save a lot of expense.
A code reader for just the pickups that we have versus a code reader for the graders and the tractors and the semis is probably gonna be, maybe different. So maybe that's why it's a higher dollar.
Well, I know there were some for two, three thousand dollars, but I don't know what they did, you know, the thing about it is, and I was a little surprised when he told me what the cost, but it was what they needed to, to cover the bigger scope. That's why I would like to have them explain
Yes.
Why and what they think it needs to be done.
Couldn't be justifiable, like.
Yeah.
Pretty easy.
Yeah.
Okay, you bring us that, Rick, and, uh, next meeting date is March nineteenth?
Yeah, I'll be out of state, coming back that night on the nineteenth, so is, see if there's any appetite to move it to the twentieth.
March twentieth, does March twentieth work for everybody? Works for me, I always gotta look at my calendar.
I'm starting to wonder if we just shouldn't start scheduling their meetings for Thursdays.
Uh, not yet, but, yeah, I, I like, yeah. Well, if no one has, uh, any problems with March twentieth, Thursday, I need a motion that we, our next regular meeting be March twentieth.
I'll motion it, cause I, guess I brought it up.
I'll second it.
That was Mark, Rick. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none?
Any issues for you?
Okay.
Just a little date, right?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Gene, aye.
I was just wondering, maybe you had some meetings or something or whatever.
Okay.
So I guess if something comes up, we can discuss it.
I'm going to pause for a second here and get it in my calendar right now. Commission meeting. Sorry about that pause, but, and I'll give everyone time for it if they cause if I don't do it, I'll be walking in here on the nineteenth again and I'll have, uh, people laughing at me again.
As long as you don't charge us mileage, that's okay.
No.
Carmen always likes you to come visit her.
Yes, cause I'm here.
Okay. Um, legislative update.
What?
Oh, the lignite energy, we just got this one?
I just wrote it down, it's legislative.
Okay. Yeah, so we haven't looked at this very closely, but I did look at the, uh, document from G C Boer, and he talks about doing a study.
And is this, since Jason stepped down, is this still supported by the Lignite Council with the new interim director?
Yeah, actually, Jonathan is the one that, that talked, had talked to me.
Tell me his name, he just said Mark told me to drop these out, so I'm assuming. And Jason went on about this from March third, but he stepped down since March third, so.
No, he's not done until the seventeenth.
Right, but he announced his.
Uh, Jason did?
Yes.
Yeah. How long has he been in that position?
Twelve years, he's going to
Going to DC.
Work for Kramer.
Yeah.
Wow. What's the gist of this?
I, my, my understanding, I know, uh, put down there that, uh, it's, I don't, this is not a legislative study, this is actually a study that's gonna be paid for by industry. So, this is, this isn't, uh, what's in here is, um, discussion of a study, if you see on the back, to better understand and support this transition, we are studying the economic impact of these industry-wide changes at both the county and state levels. Our analysis will explore how North Dakota, its counties and the lignite sector can benefit from these emerging markets, so this is work that's being done by the Lignite Energy Council, not, not at a, not about the legislature.
So I guess there would be two.
There's a House Bill tied to it.
No, there isn't.
No, it's just, so that, that carries over from the first page, Jamie, where he talks about the other bills, or no, that's actually.
That's, that's actually their, this year's.
Why they're doing it, it's because of this House Bill or wanting to prove?
No, they're unrelated.
Well, not really, cause I think, uh, I talked to Jonathan about doing this study with House Bill twelve seventy-nine, so this might be their alternative to it.
No, correct, but I don't, I know what, it's going, they went to the Senate without a study, so I don't, LEC is gonna be paying for this, this work.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
So this letter's, in essence, just giving us, uh, yeah, an overview of some details of what House Bill twelve seventy-nine is.
Somewhat about it, then also why they're doing this study.
I guess I would like to see.
Extend the existing tax relief until twenty thirty-six, so basically it's just to keep things going the way they're going?
Yeah, well, like when Jonathan talked to me, I, I mean, he said they're studying and everything, but it's not like a formal, like paid for by the legislature or anything like that, it's, it's gonna be paid for by the industry, but, um, this is more of a, just an informational, I think he also dropped, was taking this information to Oliver in McLean County also.
Okay, so this, um, for us, for this meeting, this is an informational, basically update, there's nothing we could do, there's nothing to even make a motion on or anything with this, with this, so it's just an informational update, okay?
I think we should leave it on next meeting's agenda so that we can discuss further if we need to.
Okay.
So where I was going though is, I think the county should be involved with the study, so we have some input and a better understanding of the study.
Not just the industry.
Um, when I was talking with Jonathan Fortner, then he said that if we ever wanted the Lignite Energy Council to come to one of our commission meetings and they could discuss this more in depth.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Jonathan would, uh.
If he was here this morning, that's, that's too bad he didn't, oh, it was different.
No, legislature's back, back in session, starting today.
Okay.
Um.
Somebody was here, we don't know who was here, somebody, no.
I'm pretty sure it was Jonathan that dropped it off.
His business, Jonathan's business card's with it, so that would make sense.
But I, I, I think Jonathan'd be more than happy to come up and, and come to a commission meeting, and actually, I, I think the LEC would probably be more than welcome to have the county, county be engaged in, in their, in the study if you, if you want to, I, I'm pretty sure that they'd be, they would embrace us being engaged with them.
Yeah, I'd like to work together.
I think it should be done.
Okay, so I got it on the next agenda under other business, or are you gonna contact Jonathan?
I can contact Jonathan and see if he can make it up.
So I'm gonna make a note. You're gonna contact him once in a while.
When he comes up, we can add it to the agenda. Okay. Um. Uh, let's, uh, portfolio updates, we can do those. I have nothing because my. Regional airport will be Tuesday night, this coming Tuesday, and lead board will be this coming Thursday. So. The rest of my portfolio seems pretty quiet for now, so that, that's all I have.
I could go next, because I'm pretty sure.
Okay, Jamie can go next. Are you done?
Nope. Candy cut her new door at the landfill and it is very nice and she loves it, so, and it looks really nice. She sent pictures, but. Otherwise, Jim, we're just working on shop doors over here and. In between meetings for everything else.
Mark?
Uh, library board, um, met on Monday night, uh. Foot traffic or circulations has increased in quite a few of the library, member libraries, so that's good. Um, big business of the day was, uh, um. There was a memorandum of understanding between the city of Riverdale and the library for the library to take, um, ownership of the building itself. Um, so that's moving forward, uh, so that should decide.
They did decide that? I thought they didn't want that building.
That's, well, they're getting it for nothing, so, um, it's pretty hard to turn down something like that.
Okay. Well, just, uh, in the past, we had heard updates that they were talking about. Closing the door in Riverdale.
Because the building was in such broke.
Shit. So that's why James questioned you on that.
Okay. No, and that, I guess, my understanding is that it's, it's gonna be needed over at. Nothing, and there are some improvements and everything that need to be made, but the library has, has ones that.
Okay.
That, that they're able to, to do that with, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. Good to hear. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Rick?
Sheriff's Department is uncannily quiet lately.
You don't say that word.
Good.
I, I didn't say.
So then there's nothing more to say about, uh, Sheriff's Department, okay?
I don't really, I mean, I've, we've talked briefly a few things, but nothing pressing. Road Department, we, you know, discussed with a card reader and. There, they had run into a couple issues. They're looking at, uh, how they wanna read. You know, we're still within our budget, how that remodel thing is gonna look.
Okay.
They might do a little, few different things there, but, um, nothing, uh. You know, we're getting geared up and getting ready for spring and get their, getting ready to crack sales. They haven't already started. And, uh, but other than that, things have been going fairly smooth. There also, um. The extension office, getting ready for annual review. They'll be coming up here. I think we'll do that over here again. I think Jamie helped with that last year. We met with, uh.
With Jim?
J- uh.
Jim Gray.
Jim Gray and, uh, both, uh, both of our people, and then they go through a thing that's, uh, shared expense with us. We both threw it together. We look at. Um. Planning and zoning, we had a, a meeting last week, or was it, or two weeks, two weeks ago, couple weeks ago. It didn't go real well, but we could, I think we do have it on the rail, on better on the rails, uh. We were looking at. Um. Jennifer Goss and Jen Hawaii came with their concerns putting things together, and we had a lot of discussions and really didn't get any direction for them and. Uh, I felt, in my opinion, that. To get started, have Jen and Jen over here work with the other two Jens and.
The next Jins.
Yeah, to. Put, put things in place and then the, the P and Z can critique it rather than trying to rebuild the whole thing is because we hired them to rebuild it, not, not, uh.
Right.
That's my opinion on it, but, uh.
And I do think Jen and Jen over here, both coming in new to their positions, in a sense. Have a really good understanding of what needs to change versus what was.
What the people on the P and Z, and I think, you know, and if we can. Once they get something in place, then we can sit down and look at it collectively and say, hey, we forgot this, or this looks a little different or something, but I don't think we wanna. Reinvent the wheel at, at the P and Z meeting, so.
No.
I, I think, are you in agreement with that, or?
Yes, and ultimately, the land use director is the one that has to deal with ordinances, so.
Right.
Yeah, and the planning and zoning, if you go back and look at what they're actually, they're tasked with doing, is they're vetting. Vetting the projects that they're in place or in, so that they are consistent and comply with what the county board and, and the land use administrator put in place and. I think sometimes that gets a little bit cloudy at the planning and zoning.
Well, I think that's what.
They're not, they're really not policy writers. They're, they're, they're basically, uh, the vetting and the review process.
Well, and then, like you said, it gets cloudy when it comes here. And if we can get it to a process where, you know, somebody needs something. They see our land use administrators, they go to the P and Z, they gotta list and check all the boxes. Once those boxes are checked, they bring it to us and we can approve it. We don't have to. Start from zero again, you know? That's how I, I view it.
And I add consistency also.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, and the other one I have was the fair board and, uh, things are going, moving along. We're getting things put in place, uh. For twenty twenty-five in June, uh, we, um. Have a meeting next week. Anybody wants is welcome if they wanna come, but, uh, that's, uh, what I've got.
When's the fair board?
The fair will be, uh.
No, the meeting.
Fair board meeting on the twelfth. Wednesday night, next Wednesday night.
What time, where?
Six. It'll be at the Byzen. I'm hungry. We try to support the business. We've been going to different, uh, uh, places to, uh.
Have your meeting?
Yeah, just to spread it around the county.
Okay, Casey?
Before I go, Jamie, did you have something more on the P and Z?
No, I would agree with that, that I think. It needs to start with Jen and Jen working with. Jen Goss and Apex to get started. I really don't know that, how much involvement the P and Z board necessarily. Needs to have until our main two girls. Get their. Two cents in.
Okay. Um, had a water board meeting, uh, not a lot on the agenda there, um. Went to the planning and zoning meeting, not a lot there either, kinda just, uh, getting that R F P rolling. I guess personally, then, I have been working some with that House Bill twelve seventy-nine, trying to possibly get some amendments, uh, added to that bill. That would give more funding to the county. Um, yeah, that's.
And the twelve seventy-nine, they're trying, with the county. They were looking to increase the revenue side for the county at, up to maybe twenty percent?
Uh, that was their initial offer. Uh, the last one I discussed was maybe even a seventy thirty like the oil industry does. So that's a long ways from getting anywhere, but at least try it, let's see what goes.
I did get that resolution submitted for the fallen peace officers. Um, that we talked about last meeting, so I got that submitted before I left on Wednesday, so that's all submitted to the House. The resolution, and Rick ended up signing it, Jean, since you were in Texas. So, and Todd reviewed it. He had just a few wording verbiage changes and otherwise it, it all got submitted, so. I will get you all a copy. And Carmen a copy.
Okay, anything else, Casey? Not this meeting. Hey, that gets us down to our vouchers.
Thanks for requesting that short fall deal. That made a big difference to the county.
Oh, yeah. Or for like twenty-three.
You got any other?
Yes, yeah, this is what.
All right.
Oh, so I took one copy.
See, yeah, this is, yeah, and here's the other one. This is from last year, February. And then that's from the. The goal was probably. But when I figured that out, I did it in the state. I can't even figure that out.
Care more about numbers than.
The only thing that you missed.
Treasure, treasure.
I was thinking thirty-five, like, twenty-two, one, one.
What, what, what am I missing?
Cause some of this number looks more.
Where is that? See, this says zero.
Right.
Cause I thought the one that I looked at.
My question is.
Is this bill?
Are we?
What, yeah, is it doubled up? I don't know, and not a.
I think you're right, Jean.
Different dates are on it?
No, it's the same con, the due date and everything, uh, same con. Oh, sorry. Different contract number, so it must, start date was one-one of twenty-five and this starts one-one of twenty-four, so we must have. Well, no, that doesn't make sense. Different contract.
The treasures. For the, at eight a.m., we got a separate bill for the treasures, but it's also listed right here.
I think we're getting duplicated on this one.
And this is, this is the amount that you, that's what I need to copy.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm good?
Yeah.
Right.
Am I going to order?
Nope, they're in order.
Yeah. He can yell at us later.
We'll, we'll, we'll be gone.
He can sit, he can sit in his office and press aside.
Somebody says we gotta do it.
Yeah.
It's a lot of pickles in there, though, and I was like, that's not ours. I also unloaded all of those and put them all into storage myself, so. Cause I got mash, they're.
Yeah, it looks. It's around, roughly around two million. Hold it there.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, it was ten million.
Then we got, we got some, then we got another addition after that, really.
Short call.
That was ninety-one. Versus nine hundred, ninety-nine, that was. Yeah, and we already, I think we already got ninety-one.
Do they kind of like project some and then when it back to the actual numbers come out, then they adjust it after that, correct? I thought I was under impression that they found it out. Yeah, I think they kind of, they don't know what they're doing. They projected.
Yeah, according to the tax book, you have till like January tenth, the request.
Yep, yes.
According to. Dawn, sometimes it takes until January twenty-fifth to get your last payment. My question at the state was, how do we know what the shortfall is when you've already received the last payment?
Yeah, cause, cause you don't, they, they have a projection.
I just wanna make sure, because we've.
What it's gonna be, but they don't know what it actually is.
In every department, it's gonna roll over a lot of. Until we get all the.
No, yeah, then they, then they make up.
Trade in one more month. Equipment and vehicles, I would be more active. Right, but I wanna make sure we all have old vehicles still on there that we don't have, especially some of these vehicles before. They've got, we've sometimes got rid of, I don't know. We have a lot of stuff still on that we didn't have anymore.
Why won't it check to me?
Might be somebody we both know.
And then I'll just add it to the.
So, fair board one, I never put that one on. I should have that too, but I, I just never do it. You could add up all kinds of.
Well, I went to Bismarck on behalf of the county.
Yeah, well, that's a different deal, but I.
Forgot to put it on there. So this auto, auto insurance, that's for all our vehicles?
Yeah, it actually should be. There's not a list, but that's what I asked Mark if we could get from her, just to make sure that everything that we're paying in that coverage we still. Have within the county.
Contacts everybody.
I'm speaking from personal experience with that exact firm that we just got ours, and there was many things that we were paying for that we no longer own. So I just wanna make sure, because we've sold.
Right, and, and there is a list in.
Well, so.
It's not in that bill.
Well, no, I didn't put it with the bill, but I do have a list of all the.
List of all the big numbers?
Absolutely, every vehicle that we.
So I just think, Jamie, I, I think we should make sure we have them.
Sends it to the sheriff office, to the county road, and they check it over and give it back to us.
Okay.
Okay, that's what she does, and I know she does it because they go through it.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was done, that were.
Absolutely.
So that, that auto premium is then for all our autos?
Everything, yes.
And the general liability?
Is for everything.
Emma and Marie?
That would be for the.
Two votes.
Three votes.
Two votes.
Holy, holy. Do we have some pretty good, pretty good coverage on those?
That's why I'm saying I would like to know what is actually, that somebody has looked at the list to make sure the things that are on the list that you're paying for. We still actually have.
Cause I could scan it and send.
And that the covered, yes.
Just speaking from personal.
We have our, uh, sheriff, uh. See what's between our auditor and our sheriff, find out what we got, what we're covering there.
Well, and, and, but Elroy should do it too, because it should be some equipment. Well, and, and, but Elroy should do it too, because it should be some equipment of his also.
Inland marine?
Not on the inland marine, but in general, the, there should be, all the county trucks and equipment and semis and stuff should be in there also.
Well, you said you sent that to.
What I'll do is I'll scan it, I'll send it to each department.
Yep.
Sheriff gets a share of, county road, that's.
Cause that's not.
But honestly, when she's told me, that is what supposedly she's doing with each department.
Cause that's not a little bill.
Or she gives us that bill, but like you said, I have experience, but I will definitely.
Have Rachel check that over on them. And even the sheriff's department, they double check all their vehicles besides just the boat. Cause that's not a little bill.
Yeah, I look that up, you know, there's other people I would like to provide us with this, within the county.
And, right, I mean, I think.
The only thing is, is that, you know, it's a little insurance for birds, the premium's not gonna change much.
We switched them because it was a hell of a savings.
But.
I mean, it, it would, we had a considerable dollar amount of savings by moving to. But.
Auto premium.
Doesn't mean we, we still can't.
Look again.
Look again.
Nationwide average for auto, au- auto premiums last year, I think it was like twenty seven percent increase, it's ridiculous.
What if you just scan it to them and then they go through it, then send it to you guys?
Right. Oh, okay. I saw them a few times, I just. Cause the rental is in small ones. In Castle.
What, what, what is it?
It's his office and his, and hazen, he's a person of sports.
You said there's another?
Well, it was additional to that twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
I think to my creed and I didn't find it right away.
But it's my portfolio, so I just need to call him and see what is on, that's been on the.
Can we get rid of it?
That's, it's been on on radar to. To do that.
Jamie.
What?
How often do we, uh, change, do we have to change or update our badges or something? Like from both?
I think, um. One, I feel like got damaged, one, um, I think they got a few new ones for some individuals that were like newly deputized.
We got like ten of them, it looked like.
What's that?
Well, like, uh, badges again, we've got, I've seen several of them.
But then there's also, like, they wear, they have it on their vest, but then some of them have like a second one for task, like, it's not just that one badge, they've got a few depending on what the role is for the day. Yeah, while a ba- a travel.
That's right, yeah. I'm just curious, cause I, you see them more, I mean, throughout the year, they don't just see one, you do it more often.
Well, we did.
Part of that was last year we saw more often because we had a lot of turnover in the jail.
Well, and they would have. We've got one that is like newly deputized, there's another that is covered in shifts, so they have to have Mercer County badges versus other entities.
When different people have, you know, some different departments, they may work out, out here, and then they do transfers and they have different.
Correct.
Maybe we should turn to you to contest on that. Got my bull's teeth. Is this a conference Dawn went to?
No, she's going, and she had talked to you guys about it.
Okay.
Here's your diagnostics bill, huh?
I don't think we can diagnostic Rick.
You wouldn't want the results.
Air.
Restart, restart.
Give you an explanation of that fault code. Service immediately. When do we do our R P S for this again?
Next week, isn't it? Next meeting, the bids?
Okay.
It's next meeting or the meeting, it's, uh, we just said it last week.
We're talking the bids for.
April.
Stuff like that, that's.
He is fourth.
First meeting in April, wasn't it?
Yep.
After, oh yeah, that's just the first meeting of our. Our April second. April second.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was the bids on April fourth.
So, it won't be until the fourteenth then?
Sixteen, okay.
Sixteenth, sorry, sixteen.
I, I'll. I got April second and April.
Point if they close the bids the first.
That's not the fourth, I was thinking fourth was our meeting, but I see now it's the second.
So, the bids.
I'm gonna talk to Rachel about that, she realizes that.
Okay, so the bids.
But we have it in the paper, don't we, for our fees?
Oh, yeah, we do.
For April fourth, is the deadline?
Yeah.
So, we'll just have to wait until the sixteenth for the meeting.
I don't think, I just.
I'm gonna talk to Rachel about that.
But I don't see annually and I don't.
Yeah.
There's nothing that holds us to an exact date, I don't think, so as long as we.
Except for what our deadline.
As long as we, as the bidders know, when they have to have them in by, and as long as. As long as we have an idea of what we're doing. Never gonna say as long as we know what we're doing. Now, I'll, I can only speak for myself, I guess.
No, I think we're all in the same boat, just paddling different directions sometimes.
But it's also, I don't know why they charged per one room or not the other. Yeah, like they didn't charge it on Rick's. Yeah, I saw that, Rick's was on, they didn't, right? Maybe he's got bad, he doesn't have any.
I'm guessing it's probably the bottom water. Fresh meat. That's the water.
Yeah.
Mark, you look nervous.
No.
You look nervous.
We were just cracking jokes at Rick, but he didn't hear us, so it's.
I didn't, I could hurt my name, but I didn't know what it was about.
Your hotel room was three dollars and fifty cents cheaper than Casey's, I said it's probably because you don't have hair, so they didn't charge you an amenity fee.
Didn't charge.
For the blow dryer.
Didn't, yeah, shampoo.
That's probably because they had to make my bed.
Yours with, Rick's room was the only one they didn't charge it on, otherwise they charged it on yours and Allison's also.
I'm guessing it was a bottle of water.
A whole case of seconds for.
Yeah, bottle of water, I, how much for the room? Oh, it's, uh, ninety, a hundred dollars a night. Oh, okay.
And ten dollars?
Uh, no, there's a ten dollar service fee, a five dollar tax for. Highway ten, a four dollar lodging tax, and by the time you're done, it's a hundred and forty dollars, and you go, what?
I think it, I think it's about ten dollars for everything you touch. You look at the bottle of water, you're charged four. Worst is they advertise them as complimentary sometimes.
Do you want more to approve the vouchers when they're done?
It really is one starting too. We spend more money on the turkey.
I was actually on a flight from Indianapolis last night, first, I don't know if it's. Chat goes along.
All right.
They were going from D C. And just, they, they use it. And all the men are coming out that way.
Three thousand dollars consulting for Tyler, and it doesn't work.
Hmm.
And then it still doesn't work. The bride from Bill Creek?
It's just Jim's.
Send that one back.
Oh.
Pulling it.
Uber notification.
Are you going?
I don't know.
No. Where's Nancy sending you?
Uh, who knows?
Oh, Jamie, you need to let Mark in, he's locked up.
Two other go to.
Well, yeah, I don't know, which is why you guys don't have access to that.
Oh, I don't hear it.
I only got a, my appointment tomorrow.
I'm making motion to approve in case.
No, that's already been done, just so you second the motion.
Uh, I'm gonna second it when he's done looking.
Jamie already made the motion.
Works for me, we're letting him finish looking.
Yep.
Nobody pulled Tyler or something.
Well, we had conversation about it. Considering what we got billed for is what we're having issues with.
Oh, it, I still guess mine didn't come through, so I didn't put it on. I'll put it on this one.
Okay.
Just I could add some to it, however, if he else has already approved it. Yeah?
Or, now, now, now.
Let him know.
Yeah, just put it in.
I'll just put it in on the next one. I think I'm down to P and Z, so I think we're pretty good. Hey, I got a motion and a second to approve the vouchers, and are there any questions? Very none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
G and I, motion passed. There being no further business, meeting adjourned. Record time.
Yeah.